Call a budget meeting together, or in attendance, okay. Ask city manager to the opening comments.
Good morning, or good evening, everyone, city council members and staff and people in the audience. Tonight, it's my honor to kick off the 2021 budget process for the city of Brookings. The 2021 budget process actually takes us about seven months to put together. It begins with staff strategic discussions of operational capital needs to achieve the council, the community and organization's dreams. This year is unique in that we have had to hone our expenditures to meet the economic impacts of COVID and what it's done to us for 2020. And the expectations of 2021 are still so unknown when it comes to our revenue streams. The changes for this budget began in March of this year with an expected negative eight percent sales tax projection for this year and a negative thirty-five projection, percent projection for our three B in pillow tax. Having to cut more for the 2021 budget was difficult at best. And the direction to our leadership staff was to prepare below bare bones budget less than last year. And I'm happy to announce to the public and to council that that goal was achieved. And it was achieved by leadership, not only from the department heads, but also Eric, Ashley and Jake, who will be presenting the budget tonight. Before you tonight is the 2021 budget, which is balanced, which means revenues equal expenditures. Last year, I told you that we're going to be producing that every year for you as a city council to ensure a sustainable budget moving forward. More importantly, that was very difficult to do with the COVID challenges before us. And so I'm proud that our staff was able to provide that. The overall budget is fifty-three point nine million dollars, which is approximately one point two million less than last year. And the general fund is about three hundred thousand dollars less than last year as well. In terms of reflecting back over the past two years, we've cut about one point five million dollars of operational requests from our department heads. And as we look to the future, it's going to be critical that we have strategic discussions when we do have funds available of how we're going to spend those for operations. This year, with the twenty-one budget that's presented before you, staff has made strategic surgical cuts to find that three hundred thousand, pretty much turning over every cushion available to find whatever funds available to make this budget happen. The process that we undertook allowed for constant refinement and proper planning of the budget. I will note that economic development agencies such as CVB, EDC, Swiftel, Downtown Chamber, they did take a twenty percent reduction because of projected three B revenue losses next year. However, staff was able to keep social services funded, agencies funded at historical, close to historical levels. And Jake will present that here towards the end of his, his presentation. Finally, the budget that's presented to you tonight is transparent and accurate. I'm very proud to turn over the budget presentation to Jake, Eric and Ashley, but more importantly, I and leadership staff are here to answer any questions you might have throughout this process. So with that, Jake, you would proceed.
Thank you, Paul. Good afternoon slash evening, mayor and council. Just to be clear, council member Tilton Byrne, can you see the screen all right?
Jake, I don't think she's on the phone yet. She's going to be a little late.
All right, thank you. Then we'll go ahead and get started. So just to start with some kind of administrative process and provide an overview of our workshop schedule. So here we are tonight, July fourteenth, and the main topics we'll be covering this evening is an overview of the total budget. And then we'll get into our operating budgets, which include our general fund, most importantly, as well as our special revenue, debt service and enterprise funds. And then lastly, we'll finish tonight with outside agency discussion, as well as an opportunity for city council to ask questions and provide any feedback. But this is a informal formal presentation, so I'd encourage any interruption at any time to clarify anything that we can. Our next workshop will be held on July twenty-eighth, and at that point, we intend to go over the ten-year capital improvement plan, as well as review the fee schedule for next year. And with that, staff really wanted to leave that August eleventh workshop open for city council. The purpose of that workshop is you'll see it's noted as optional, but we're very happy to have it. But that'll be a council-driven discussion. If there's any details that council would like to dive further into, if there's anything that we feel hasn't been clarified quite well enough, we're happy to dive in and provide that additional context there. So we're leaving that date somewhat open, but letting council really drive the discussion there to answer any questions and turn over any stones that we may not have to that point. The formal adoption process of the budget, August twenty-fifth, we'll have the first region reading of our budget ordinance. And then on September eighth, we'll have that second reading, as well as the adoption of the fee schedule and the adoption of the ten-year capital improvement plan. Again, with September twenty-second, that is a contingency date, as noted. It's kind of similar to our August eleventh workshop. That's just a placeholder in case there's anything that comes up in this process. As staff, we wanted to ensure we allowed plenty of time to address any nuances or discrepancies that still allow us to get a budget passed by October first. We're getting a little feedback over the phone. In front of you is an overview of the workshop for tonight. This is a high level of agenda of all the items we plan to cover. I'm not going to read it in detail, but some of the things you'll see is that we're going to provide the highlights of the budget, as Paul already alluded to. Look at a budget at a glance. We'll get into some of our primary revenue sources, namely first penny sales tax, bed booze and board tax, bid tax, as well as property tax. And then we'll get into kind of those operating budgets, as early alluded to, finishing with the outside agencies and leaving time for questions and feedback. So some of the highlights that we're looking at for this year, this is going to be a balanced budget. We will bring council a balanced general fund budget, as well as the capital improvement plan. As Paul mentioned, that is a goal of staff that we're passing and providing sustainable budgets to council to build a stronger Brookings going forward. In this process, we are projecting negative sales tax growth. We're going to be down about two percent from 2020, factoring in different COVID things. Eric and his staff have really been doing a great job focusing on those national and local trends to see where we think we're going to go in making those projections to allow us to budget as accurately as possible. As Paul had mentioned, that did require a three hundred thousand dollar general fund decrease from 2020 and about a one point five million dollar decrease from the general fund operations between the last two years. Again, to credit Eric and his staff, one of the things they did is they did a multi-year look at actual spending for each and every line item in this budget. So as staff, when we were having our budget meetings with the leadership team and the department heads, we're really looking at if there was five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, where we could really scrape that down to historic levels and still meet the needs that we're, and services that we're trying to provide, but make this as lean and streamlined as a budget as possible, really focusing on efficiencies and those organizational improvements to make sure that we're being as lean as we can, but again, still providing the Brookings level of service. The budget itself is intuitive, and by that we mean that while it's a complex document, it should be fairly easy to follow. You'll be able to see that the departmental spending aligns with the departments they're in. One of the changes you'll see for this year is we reduced the non-departmental expenditures and put those into the actual operating budgets where they live. So this is it. This is the budget at a glance. You'll see that is a little bit of a difference from last year. One of the things we did is we particularly called out the liquor pass-through. Now, that is not a separate fund by any means. It falls within our enterprise fund for this year, but to make an apples-to-apples comparison, we wanted to call that out here specifically so that you could kind of see where we're at and all of that. So one of the things you'll see there is our general fund does have that decrease that Paul was referencing there. That's about a three hundred thousand dollar decrease. And additionally, our revenue and debt service funds, they are down from la, or they are actually up from last year. Losing my breath behind the mask. All right. So you'll actually see our revenue and debt service funds are up from last year, and that is really project-based and driven. The enterprise funds are down, and the reason for that is again, project-based driven. We had a major project out at the airport, and we had a major project at the landfill that really account for that decrease there. Your CIP funds are up about two million dollars there, and that again is project-driven. As council may recall, we did do the McKinstry analysis, and what we're really doing as staff is we're incorporating a lot of those facility projects, and we're actually budgeting for those within the CIP. So that's one of the things that you'll notice as council that those funds did go up, but again, next week, we will, or next study session, we will be bringing a balanced budget back to you there as well. So few of the highlights there that I just wanted to point out, again, we'll get into more detail for all of these as we make our way through the, the budget process. Some of the major changes for 2021 that we wanted to call out as staff, so the liquor pass-through, this is a service that the city provides to our local establishments. And what that is, is that we essentially front the cost for the liquor, and then we, through the distributors, and then we bill the establishments back. They get one consolidated bill from the city. This is something that Eric and Ashley again did do a lot of research into, and we found that generally our establishments do appreciate this service. So it's something that they've been able to find some efficiencies in it, but it's something that we explored and wanted to keep in place. But by moving that to the liquor fund, we're more accurately showing our general fund budget. What this used to do is inflate that general fund by about seven million dollars, and it made it look like we had more money than we did. But it really, it's just money in, money out. So this is just a more accurate accounting of that. So it will be moved to the liquor enterprise fund. There's a little bit of a restructure going on in engineering, community development, and this will be captured within Public Works. By and large, this is going to help staff greater utilize our capacity to manage our facilities, building inspections and code enforcement. And because of some shifting of positions that were already in place, it does have a neutral budget impact. So the city council will not see any increase from this. It's just an administrative restructure to better utilize some of the capacity that we already have in our organization. Non-departmental expenditures is account four oh five, and what city council will see is that we've really reduced that for this year. It's more of an administrative measure for staff, just because we had multiple department heads that were managing specific line items, but there was a little bit of discrepancy with not necessarily understanding which funds were used for which purposes. So what we did with those funds is we just moved them into specific departments, whether it be city manager, city clerk and others. And it really improves the financial understanding and accountability and makes it more direct on who's managing those funds and what those funds are used for, as opposed to kind of this non-departmental fund that falls in, in between a few of the others. One of the other things that Eric and his staff have taken on this year is reduced cost allocations. And these are insignificant dollar amounts, usually less than ten thousand dollars. And what we found is the finance staff is spending a lot of time for these general fund copier leasage, posted, long-distance calling. So they're maintaining these spreadsheets and cost allocating maybe a couple hundred dollars to specific departments when really that general fund does operate as one pot of money that's subdivided into those departments. So this is an efficiency savings for staff time, and we move those to general government buildings fund, four seventeen, I believe. And that just, it'll help us take advantage of some efficiencies, and then we have all those funds coming out of one place. So shifting gears a little bit, the next thing we wanted to talk about is our primary revenue sources. And we do have some other more minor ones that do play a role here, but we did want to highlight our sales tax. So that's your first penny sales tax that funds your general fund operations, about forty-one percent. Property tax, assessed on properties. And then your bed booze and board tax, which is really your tourism and entertainment tax, that's one percent on those items. And then pillow tax is that two dollars per night fee for hotel rooms. So what we wanted to do here as staff is provide a little bit of a, an overview of where we've been in the past and where we're going, and use that as context to let city council know how we arrived at these numbers. I will note that Eric and his staff are continuously monitoring those national and local trends. We do have a number of folks that we consult with to make sure that our assumptions are fair and reasonable and that we're utilizing the best data that is, that's available to us. So looking back here from 2018 actuals, how we budgeted for 2020, as we took a two percent increase from there, which was very conservative at the time, again, not predicting that COVID would hit as it has. From there, we estimated that at most we would probably see, or we're estimating an eight percent contraction from 2019 actuals for our 2020 budget. So that's how we get to that six point six million dollar number. And again, relying on Eric, his staff, and as well as the professionals that we're talking to, we're looking at a two-thirds recovery of that eight percent, which is about five point three percent increase from 2020. The other caveat in there is that you'll maybe notice that that six point six to six point nine isn't exactly five point three percent. The reason for that being is we're also losing the additional tax on internet service. So there's kind of two competing trends here. We are getting some internet sales tax revenue from online purchases, but we used to be able to actually tax internet service, and that's gone away. That went into effect July first of 2020, so just about right now. So we're seeing half of that lost this year, and then we'll see a full year's worth of loss next year. Total, we're looking at about three hundred thousand is what the municipal league estimated, so we just broke that down one hundred and fifty, one hundred and fifty each year to make sure that we're capturing that full loss. Property tax. So our property tax levy is calculated on a formula basis, and that's provided by Brookings County Finance, and it's based on CPI and growth. So from 2020 to 2021, they're both about one point seven percent, and by both, again, referring to CPI and growth, allowing our total increase to go, to be up about three point four percent. And there's a couple of reasons why we utilize that full increase every year. It helps, helps us alleviate the use of the opt-out. And if we were to not take that full increase at any year, it compounds over time because you can never get it back without that opt-out. A couple of these slides I'll show you in the forward, or going forward, will show you kind of how our tax rate compares to other communities, and then kind of the impact of how this works. But the other thing I want to highlight here is that sale, or property tax is our most stable revenue. So as sales tax does fluctuate significantly, or can fluctuate significantly year over year, property tax is historically a more stable revenue source. So as you'll see, this is a chart that we had put together, I believe in 2019, just for comparisons purposes, to show the Brookings sales tax mil levy rate in comparison to our other communities across the state. And what we found here is that we are lower than most of our other first-class communities when we compare that. BMU was able to provide some context here for us in that we used to get even more of a transfer from them, but there was a nineteen ninety-six telecommunications act that really put a strain on, on that transfer. So over years, that transfer was able to be deducted a little bit over time. Luckily, as a community, we're able to rebound and get back to sustainable budgeting. But from my understanding, that really did create some difficult years back then because of that act that went into place. So this is just a little bit of how we see our rate being impacted by not taking that full increase year over year, and why we recommend continuing to do that in the future. You have a question, council member?
Sorry. You said sales tax, but that chart shows property tax. Is it a property tax measurement or a sales tax?
I misspoke. That is, this is a property tax measurement.
Okay. And so that's per hundred thousand dollars or some, or what's it?
Per thousand.
Per thousand, okay. Thank you.
One of the other misconceptions out there held by some on property tax is that the full amount comes to the city of Brookings, but in fact, we actually only get sixteen percent of that as a city. And this is a chart that we had created as part of last year's budget process to show that of the property tax, it's really broken down between the city, the county and the school district, and the city actually gets a small slice of that, sixteen percent. So this is just a one example here of a two hundred and fifty thousand home. Overall, they're going to spend about thirty-seven hundred in annual property taxes, and then again, you take that down by the percentage, you can see the city's only getting about five hundred ninety-seven dollars or six hundred dollars of that full amount. So we do share that property tax with other taxing jurisdictions. Bed booze and board, this is your tourism tax. It's one percent on those three items. This is one that has been impacted a little bit more dramatically due to COVID. So what we did here is from 2020 budget, we took about a two percent increase from 2018 actuals once again. We're estimating a larger contraction here, about thirty-five percent from 2019 actuals to get us to our 2020 estimate of about seven hundred thousand. And based on the returns that we've seen to date, that is a fairly accurate and quite accurate number that we've been seeing. Again, based on the information that we've received, we anticipate that there will be about a fifty percent recovery, so about seventeen and a half percent from 2020 estimate to 2021 budget, and that's how we arrived at that eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar revenue number. And again, as we get into the expenditures for three B and those economic development agencies, as Paul alluded, that twenty percent cut was necessary so that we have a balanced three B budget. Pillow tax, this one, so when you look in our budget book, it's going to show as a four to five hundred thousand dollar expense. The reason for that is this one operates a little bit differently. We can only collect as much as we budget. So if we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars, we would only be able to collect a hundred thousand dollars of that. So we budget that high, just in case we have a really good year and we want to make sure we can capture the full amount. But what this slide is actually showing you is our actuals year over year. So how we budgeted this is we did do a fifty percent contraction from 2019 actuals, and again, those are tracking very close to the numbers that are coming in through about half the year so far. And with this one, we do estimate a fifty percent recovery from twenty, twenty estimates, and that's how we arrived at that hundred and seventy thousand number for 2021. Switching gears once again, now we'll go into our general fund. This is the overview of our 2021 proposed revenue, revenue and expenditures. As you'll notice, those two numbers in the middle are equal, and that's how we arrive at a balanced budget to show that the amount that we're bringing in is the same amount that is going out. So it is a balanced budget. Public safety, which is police and fire, Public Works, which includes community development, engineering and some facility budgets, as well in parks, recreation and forestry account for about seventy-three percent of your total general fund expenditures. On the revenue side, you have your sales tax, your property tax, and transfers account for about eighty-two percent of your total revenues. So again, just kind of specifying that there are, on both the expenditure and revenue side, there are a few pieces that really make up the majority of that pie. We're going to do a little bit more detail here on these coming slides. So looking at the revenue again, you'll see about that two percent decrease in property or a sales tax. Property tax is about three point two. The reason it's a little off is we did include, the 2020 number does include the late payments, essentially, so we don't include those in our, our levy for 2021, but those are included there. Some of the other revenue sources that make up a lesser amount, you'll see our departmental expenses, as well as intergovernmental and other. Departmental, we're looking at permit fees, fines and forfeitures. Intergovernmental is some state and county taxes that are shared. And then when you get into the other, we're looking at licenses, liquor override, interest income, franchise fees and cell tower rentals, just some smaller revenues there. And then in terms of the transfers, Brookings Municipal Utilities, liquor store, Research and Technology Center and landfill is where those transfer revenues come in. You'll see some of the decreases there in departmental and other. We did see some reductions in those departmental fees due to COVID. Additionally, when we were going back and really trying to make our expenditures as accurate as possible, we did the same thing with our revenues. So if we saw that a revenue source wasn't historically meeting the thresholds that we set it at, as staff, we did decrease that so that we were accurately budging on both sides, the revenues and the expenditures. Getting into the expenditure detail, so your administration, that includes your city manager's office, your city clerk, city attorney, and as the mayor and council as well. You'll see that it's about a four percent increase. And again, that is largely attributed to moving some of those non-departmental expenses over. So just a couple of examples, non-departmental used to include our contract for our city website, as well as our television contract that helps us broadcast these council meetings and different venues in this chamber, in the chambers here. So the website went to the city manager's budget for Chelsea to manage as our marketing person. Those television contracts went into city clerk for Bonnie to manage, as she has the best grasp on that. So really, it looks like an, an increase, but then you go down when you see that the non-departmentals are decreasing about thirty expense, or thirty percent. So that's just really a reallocation. Parks, rec and forestry, you'll see down almost one percent, and that's really that bare bones that Paul was talking to, as well as those surgical cuts of just scraping line items wherever we could to find those savings. And that's a trend that you'll see throughout most of the other accounts. HR and IT and finance, you'll see that went up about ten percent. Again, the reason there is there were some cost allocations where we had some things that were cost allocated to human resources. Additionally, there was some improvements that we made for cybersecurity, as well as moving a few items to the cloud, just to enhance our network here and ensure that safety and reliability here within the city. Outside of that, you'll see our transfers went down significantly. There's a two-fold a reason for that. The airport is now subsidized directly from the landfill, as opposed to coming from the general fund. So what happens is, as I mentioned, the landfill transfers revenue to the general fund, and then what we used to do was take part of that and transfer that out to subsidize the airport to balance that budget. What you're seeing now is instead of kind of take, we took that middleman out, and we subsidized it directly from landfill to airport. But again, what that does is it reduces the amount of money that's being transferred out from the general fund. The other portion of that is our E nine one one expenses down for this year. E nine one one was a little bit over their historic usage of reserves, or they had more reserves than their kind of threshold was set at. So what they decided to do is, as the E nine one one board was utilize some of those reserves this year, and that basically took our transfer down about sixty thousand dollars for, for this year going forward. The last one is the appropriations and the subsidies. The main drivers of taking that down there is the research park at SDSU is treated like our economic development agencies, but it's funded out of the general fund. So you'll see a twenty percent cut to them in line with our other economic development agencies, and we're seeing those savings, if you will, in the general fund side, which is a big contributor, contributor to that. We did do some minor reductions to some volunteer boards and commissions just based on projects and historic usages in the past. But we do have the whole outside agency discussion at the end, so we'll have more detail on what that exactly looks like. This is a high-level overview of our special revenue and debt service expenditures. The only debt service fund here is the TIF funds. We showed it this way last year, so we just wanted to be consistent for continuing council members to see roughly the same level of detail. Some of the things that you'll notice here, actually, as just a point of interest, last year, this was about ten point seven million dollars, and we're at about twelve million this year. Some of the significant changes that drove this up is our special assessment fund increased by about two million for the Fifteenth Street and Seventh Avenue project. Storm drainage increased by about one million for a number of different stormwater initiatives. So really, this increase that you're seeing before you tonight is really project-based. One of the, on the other side of that, the Swiftel Center did decrease by about two hundred and fifty thousand from last year to this year. Our E nine one one is down, as I mentioned, due to some use of reserves. And public art was budgeted at about two hundred and fifty thousand this year, and that was for a large project at Bob Sheldon. So next year, that's seventy-five thousand is really more routine maintenance and just kind of more traditional year, as opposed to a, a large expenditure. Wanted to get into a little bit more detail on the Swiftel operating transfer. So the Swiftel Center operating transfer does come out of our three B fund with our other economic development agencies. And this shows the actual transfer that we've made as a city to subsidize the Swiftel operations over the, over the years. One of the things we'll note here is that our 2021 budget really has that transfer back down within 2017 levels. So we did see some increases there through eighteen and nineteen and even 2020, but that 2021 number is actually a thirty-six percent reduction from 2018, and even a seventeen and a half percent reduction from last year's budget that was adopted. Part of the reason for that, again, is doing those analysis to see where we can scrape some of those funds and put Swiftel kind of in the same boat as our department has to see what they could do to make their budgeting more efficient. But again, Tom and his staff as well are doing a, an event cost benefit analysis to really find out which events that they should be targeting that are good from a dollars and cents perspective. Again, it's a balance there because we want to make sure that we're attracting good offense, good events for a community orientation, but as this should also be run as a business, we want to make sure that they're, making sure that those efforts are targeted. So your enterprise funds, these are really your departments that operate as a business, and that what that means is that their revenues coming in are to not only sustain their year-to-year operations, but they should run at a surplus to allow for capital expenses. So for example, the landfill, they did their big two point one million dollar cell construction project this year. Because they operate at a, at a surplus, they're able to pay for that in cash and have those reserves. So it's making sure that these are sustainable, not only on a year-to-year basis, but in the long run as a whole and into the foreseeable future. So just to kind of break this slide down, what you have in front of you on the left is your expenditures by each of those different departments, and you'll see that, or funds. You'll see that the liquor fund is much larger this year, and again, that goes back to moving the pass-through into the liquor fund. Now, to make a distinction there, the liquor pass-through is still managed by the finance department. The finance department has always handled that function. They will continue to handle that function. The remainder, to get to that ten point four, is a three point eight million dollar budget for the liquor store itself, and that number does align very well with historic averages. So it looks like a large difference, and it looks like it takes up most of the pie. But again, almost six point eight million dollars of that is the pass-through. It's money that comes out, or money that goes out and comes back in. It's a, it's a wash at the end of the day. But what you'll see in the upper right-hand corner is a table here, and what this table does show is that as a And what this table does show is that, as a whole, your enterprise funds are going to propose to operate at about a $1.5 million surplus for 2021. And that's what you want to see as these funds operate as a business. So you'll see that the liquor as a whole is going to turn a surplus of almost $500,000. And again, that is utilized to subsidize Edna Brook Golf Course, as well as comes into the general fund. And then you'll see there, the other side of that is that your airport and your golf course do need a little bit of subsidy. Those do run at a deficit on an annual basis. But then again, your solid waste operations and then the Research and Technology Center do operate as a surplus. And funds are transferred. You have some enterprise-to-enterprise fund subsidy. And then what doesn't go there comes back into the general fund to subsidize your police, parks, and rec, fire, and things of those nature. The last item tonight is the outside agencies. And we've actually broken this down into two parts. The first one is the ones that are funded through your triple B, CIP, and the pillow tax, if you will. You'll notice, as Paul had mentioned earlier, that we did meet with these outside agencies and discussed a 20% reduction from 2020 levels for those agencies to pass a balanced 3B budget. They were welcoming and accepting of that discussion. So with that being said, you can now see kind of where their request was and where they would land for this year. The Convention and Visitors Bureau, or Visit Brookings, is partially funded by the pillow tax. So the remainder is what ends up getting funded out of the triple B. And then with the SDSU visitor promotion, they did request $50,000 as a staff. We try to get them as close to $50,000 on an annual basis as we can. Right now, they are estimating about $20,000 to $25,000 in carryover from 2020 to 2021. So with that $20,000 amount budgeted, that should really put them into the $40,000 to $45,000 is what we're estimating at for the 2021 levels. Are there any questions on the economic development outside agencies? And then these are your general fund outside agencies. One of the things I'll draw attention to right away is everything highlighted in green is going to be your social service agencies that are going to go through that new United Way process. So it's not that their requests are zero for this year. It's just that they're all getting lumped into that last line that you see, that's social service agency slash United Way funding. So some of the ones that are being funded outside of that are the research park at SDSU. Again, that $117,000 does represent a 20% cut in line with our other economic development agencies. The Brookings School District, the Humane Society, which we have a contract for for services, Arts Council, and then the Community Band. Again, general recommendation from staff there is to keep them at their 2020 level as much as possible. You will notice that there is a total decrease in those social service, city-related outside funding. About $50,000 of that is due to the research park, as well as we did a few non-applicants, and affiliated organizations, humanities councils, and every other year event, and then the drug court and the farmers market. Again, to balance the budget, you'll notice it's an odd number because that is the remainder to balance this budget. So staff would propose $225,000, about $500,000 that would go to the United Way for their process.
Jake, sorry, I wanted to make sure I understood that the lines in white that don't have money allocated or requested, did that mean that those applications did not come in?
That's correct. So if they're in white and there's nothing recommended, it's because they did not provide an application.
Okay, thank you.
And really, the last slide is questions. So anything that you'd like to cover in more detail through tonight's presentation? Yes, ma'am.
To go back to Leah's question, so when you talk about the affiliated organizations, does this include the organizations who now have to apply through United Way?
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time? I couldn't quite hear you.
Are these affiliated organizations that you have at zero, are those the organizations that now have to apply through United Way?
No, they would not be. The affiliated organizations was a catch-all used in the past. That would include your Friends of Baseball, Visa, and then the Swim Club. Last year, we did not have applications from Friends of Baseball or Visa, but we did have a small one from Swim Club. They did not provide one for this year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, what's the timeframe to apply for this?
For the outside agency funding?
Yeah.
So we have a little bit of a new process this year. And I'll rely on Paul to correct me if I missstep on this. But what our application timeline is, is we present the application for the city side, which is everything in white on this page here, as well as these economic development agencies. So that goes out in May. And then they have a full month to put the application in. So June 1 is when these outside agency applications are due. So the press release goes out on May 1, applications are due on June 1. We did do some communications this year to let the social service agencies know that we were having the United Way process, and it's a little bit different this year. So the way that this is recommended to work this year is that United Way will solicit their applications a little bit later in the fall. So city council will actually allocate this sum of money, right now proposed at $225,000. United Way will bring back a recommendation to city council on how they recommend funding these outside agencies with that pot of money. So they'll take that $225,000 and say, this organization should get X and provide that recommendation. Ultimately, city council will have the final say on how that money is divvied up amongst those social service agencies. This process is really meant to take advantage of the connections and understanding of the United Way to the nonprofit organizations in the community and identify that greatest need, and then try to allocate those funds on a rubric to meet those needs.
Councilman Wendell.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question about the general fund expenditure detail page.
Yeah.
You did a nice job explaining the nondepartmental expenditure changes and the change to the administration line item. In most cases, we saw where line items had decreases, but there were a couple that had increases. I wonder if you could just spend a couple moments explaining the police, finance, HR, IT, and public works increases?
So with the finance, HR, and IT increases, a lot of those go back to some of those cybersecurity improvements. So we did provide, get into some additional contracts for cybersecurity services. One that particularly comes to mind is through a contract called Defendify to shore up our network. Additionally, we are allocating a little bit more funds there. And I apologize, I forgot to mention this the first time through. We did have some turnover in staff recently. The way the structure for IT currently is, is we have two IT specialists. What staff is proposing to do is go out and get an IT manager, someone to provide more of that network-related support. So for finance, HR, and IT, those biggest increases are really in IT. And you'll see that they're going to come in like your contract services, which are really cybersecurity-related, and then a little bit in salaries to allow for the increase to go to an IT manager. Additionally, some of those nondepartmentals did get transferred over to human resources, where we had, I think, like employee recognition and wellness program and different things like that that came out of nondepartmental. As far as the police, I would defer to Dave. I know it's, again, it's only about a half a percent, little under increase from year over year. Not sure if Dave would want to speak to some of the specific line items. He stepped out, okay. And that may be one we could always come back to at the third work session.
I think my question this year was, maybe it just stuck out more than that significant or insignificant a change. Normally would, because we saw so many areas take a step back. And so any area that had an increase, I was curious about.
Yeah, and we can certainly go back and do a little bit more research there to find out exactly what drove that up a little bit.
Can I ask one other question? This one is more related to revenues. I know that we have looked for this information before and struggled to track it down. We saw a spike in our sales tax revenue, I think in 2019. And I was wondering if we've ever been able to track down where that increase came from, and we'd seen it kind of come back down to earth a little bit, if we've ever been able to track down why we saw such a significant spike in that one year.
You know, and I'm going to turn it over to Eric here in just a second, so he's ready to answer it. But you know, that's something that him and his staff are constantly trying to get more detail on from the Department of Revenue to answer those questions and be able to understand what's driving sales tax up and down. I can just say it is a continuous struggle on our end to try to get that level of transparency and detail because as we budget, we want to know as much as possible so that when we project our expenditures, we're doing it in accordance with the revenues that we can expect. But Eric, would you want to talk to sales tax?
I think that 2019 was when we began collecting online sales tax. That could be one of the reasons why we had it. We also had a stronger economy. But we also usually are very conservative in projecting our revenue sales tax. So we take 2% of the year, one and a half years behind. So those are a lot of reasons. Unfortunately, like Jake said, we can't really understand the full detail on why it increased. So those are the factors. We also had some settlements from previous years, and we're experiencing those this year as well, where like the Department of Revenue goes and audits different companies. It could be three years behind, and we just get the payment. So we also constantly struggle to find the detail on those to try to strip that out of the economic factors.
Thank you for that, yeah. I wanted us to just revisit that topic. I think it's more important now than ever as folks are really paying attention to sales tax revenue and the trends we'll see over the next couple of years. And I just want us to continue to be that leader in the communication with the State Department of Revenue. I've appreciated the leadership you've already taken in that. And I think if Brookings is one of the communities that's out in front of that effort, it's a positive thing for the whole state.
Jake, I would mention, in the police department, just looking at the line item details, the largest increase is our insurance. And I can't remember if that was the risk insurance or liability. And then the other one was software as well. And I can't quite remember what that increase was for specifically when it comes to software. Didn't know if you or Eric could remember what that was. If not, we can bring that back at the next meeting.
I want to review that at the next meeting. I do know that some of those increases may be attributed to kind of shifting where they were paid for. So I don't know that it's necessarily as much new as it was, moving it from contracted services to a software line. So I do want to follow up on that to make sure that the information is as accurate as it can be.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
Anything else the three of you had to present or speak to? Counsel, any other questions or comments?
Are we going to talk in more detail about the outside agency funding? I guess I missed, if this was that only conversation, if we're doing that again at a later time?
Which funding, I'm sorry?
The outside agencies, like our economic development and whatnot.
And that will be the next meeting, correct?
Well, actually, Jake presented that today, so it's entirely up to council. If you want to have continued conversations, at the next meeting, staff will present the capital improvement plan, respond back to any questions that you might have had tonight that we couldn't answer. But if you want to have continued conversations, I'd recommend you as council talk about the need for that and maybe give staff any type of direction of material that we might need to present or prepare for you as well to make whatever decisions you need. I will also note that at the next meeting, Heidi from United Way will present the application. Earlier in this year, there were some conversations about the difference between the United Way application and city application. She's compiled the difference, and I asked her to go and present that to you so you can kind of see that. Give some direction so she understands the prioritization of the council as they move forward with those applications as well.
Maybe I would just like to make one comment then that I noticed in the applications. In reviewing BEDC's application, I see Al Hutton is here and looking at the research park application. I noticed in that research park application that there was an indication of programming for entrepreneurial, like business startup and things like that. And to me, I thought of that, and I thought, that seems like overlap with what BEDC is doing. And I just wondered if that's the case, or if that's a component of their mission as well. If so, it wasn't something I was aware of, really a comment.
Al, you put you on the spot. Do you want to speak to that? Or I know BEDC is doing a great job in that area.
Al Hutton, Director of Brookings Economic Development Corporation. You know, all I can answer is about what we're doing. We've had a Director of Entrepreneurship in place for four years and have been conducting entrepreneurship programs for a lot longer than that. I know that the research park does do work with SDSU faculty and students as well on entrepreneurship-related activities, but I couldn't go into detail about what that is or how it differs specifically from what we do. So, best I can answer.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We'll look into that and get an answer for you. Thank you.
Mayor Corbett.
Oh, Councilman Bacon.
Is that Holly calling in? I just, Joey, I thought it might help if you had a little historical here. In the past, until this year, all of these outside agencies that we're talking about, most of them are local nonprofits, all submitted applications directly to the city council. And we had a chunk of our budget that was dedicated to them. And the council directly made the decisions on what funding they would receive. And this year, we are contracting with United Way, and they're taking over the administration of those funds, so.
Okay, anything else, council members?
I guess I'd just make one more comment, and this is really for Jake and for Eric and your teams. I really appreciate the work that you all put into this. And I know it's not easy for everyone in this room who had to think about ways to cut expenses. And I admire the work that you've all done. There's, you know, a stereotype about governmental agencies sometimes. They just keep the same budget line items and make sure they get that funding year over year. And I'm really glad to see that that's not how the city of Brookings is doing business here. So I just wanted to commend you on that. And even these binders are just really nicely organized and well-done. So I just want to give some kudos to the teams for putting that together. As I reviewed this information, I felt it was very strong last year, but it was even stronger this year. I was able to more accurately perceive what was going on with the budget. And I'm just going to make one more very, very, very slightly nitpicky comment. And maybe this is for Chelsea, just because I'm a stickler with the graphic design stuff here. But as I look at this visual right here, the proportions or the percentages of those fundings, it doesn't seem to line up with how the colors are allocated in that pie chart. And I just wondered if that was something that bothers any other type A's, right? So.
May I comment to that real quick?
Certainly.
So that's, it's funny that you bring that up. One of the things I wanted to mention is that all of this is in draft format yet because we're going from meeting to meeting. So the reason the proportions are off is because they're actually last year's proportions, and they haven't been updated yet. I didn't want to ask Chelsea to put too much time into it, depending on not knowing how tonight's meeting was going to go and how they may change and how variance they may get. But once the final product is done, those proportions will align, so.
That makes perfect sense. I totally support that. I just thought I would point it out. And even like as I was looking at things, the liquor pass-through thing that you had talked about, because I knew that was the case, those charts made sense to me and the way it was called out there. But it was really helpful that you cued us into that and explained that, so thank you.
Yeah, so when they do, when it is finalized and we do present it back, the proportions will be accurate.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Councilman Niemeyer.
This probably Eric or possibly Jake could answer this. But these, the general fund expenditure detail, are these as of today? Or is this what we expect this year so far? Are these going to be moving targets?
This one right here?
Yeah.
This is the 2020 budget. So this is what we had budgeted for.
So far, or this is what you expect?
What was last year adopted.
Okay.
So we have updated estimates that we'll see. Are those in the budget detail, Eric, the sheet? Nope. See, when we do get further along, we do have estimates for 2020 that we can show as well. So we did have department has to go back and provide estimates on this. But this is a comparison year-over-year for what was adopted in 2020.
Okay. Because we don't have any, any numbers right now that tells us what we actually have used? I mean, if we, if we look at, say, 2018, 2019, we got actual, and then we only got adopted for 2020, do we have any year-to-date how we're doing?
We will get it at the end of this month, it's usually in the quarterly CFO report. So at the end of July, we will. And just so that everybody knows, we are managing to a COVID budget, which is even reduced more than the budget that was passed, and that will be provided in the CFO report update.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Mayor, just real quick for the audience watching at home, people should know that we've created a new budget webpage out there. So all this information, the PowerPoints and any information that's updated to the council will be uploaded to that webpage so citizens can see firsthand what's going on. And we also have the first one pager of our budget in brief so people can follow along rather than getting lost in the details of the many, many pages of the budget.
And adding to the comment Leah made earlier, that one page or two page, I guess, introduction to the general fund, how we spend that and everything's very, very helpful. So great information. Anybody has questions, go online, look it up. Okay, council, we stand adjourned until 6 o'clock.